Pizza out here.
So we are back on air.
I do. And as per discussion with the prosecutor, I'm going to use a little bit more by some of you. Please state your full name for the record.
Audrey Bombak.
And you spell your last name?
B-O-M-B-A-K.
How long have you been working at the spot?
Since like 96.
And what is your role?
Bartender.
And what shift do you generally work?
The night shift from nine to close, roughly.
Okay. Now, you've heard the various incidents that were brought up tonight through the officer's testimony. But before I get to that, have, do you have a bartending license?
Yes.
Have you taken different training?
I had to take the test a long time ago or whatever.
Do you deliberately serve, over-serve people?
No. I'll throw them a coke or something if I think they had too much and let them sit for a while or something. I'll even take keys away from them if I have to.
Okay. Have you, regarding any of the incidents here, because there was an allegation that keys were missing, in any of these incidents here that were brought before the committee, did you take any keys?
No.
There was, I believe, two incidents you had discussed initially, and I'm going to go to those first. And I'll just use the complaint numbers and the date. One was reference the gentleman having a drink thrown on you on March 7, 2/21, number eight?
Yeah.
Can you kind of explain what happened that evening?
Came in with a couple of guys that normally come in like once or a week maybe, or two weeks they come in. And he's never been in there before. And he's a little extreme. And he ordered the drinks for him and his friends, so I made them. And I gave him the change quick. Then I ran down to the other end of the bar to serve a couple more guys. He's like, "Wait, wait, wait, I was going to tip you," type of thing. And I'm like, "I'll be back," you know? And so I got to take care of these guys, so I served them. And then he kept mouthing off about it, and I'm like, "He's going to leave it on the ledge," you know, type of thing. And then I get down there, and then he's kind of like trying to turn this into an argument. And I'm like, "I guess you really didn't want to tip me then." So then he took his drink and he threw it in my face. And then he took the glass and he threw it at the bar and put a crease in the bar. The glass didn't break, I'm surprised. Then he reached over and stole the bottle of Quirrell.
Okay.
And the two guys with him didn't do anything to stop him. Then they tried to pick a fight with the guys at the end of the bar. Then they finally, you know, finally left. So the cops are on their way, and then they left, so.
Okay, well, let's just talk about that. So he hadn't even had one beer in the bar or drink?
I made him a mixed drink, but he threw it all in my face, so he didn't have a drink.
And that was the number eight on the incident?
Yep.
Okay, and then you said call the cops. What is, what is the procedure for you when you decide whether to call the police or not?
Well, after he threw the drink in my face and he busted the glass, that's when I went right for the phone.
Okay.
You know, I went as fast as I could.
What's your say in general?
I don't want to call unless it's really necessary, I guess, I mean.
But are you afraid to call?
Yeah, sometimes I'd rather not.
Okay, well, let's, did you call the police if there's anything serious? I mean, define, define that a little bit more.
Well, if I don't think it's necessary, if I think it's going to calm down and de-escalate, I'm not going to call them. But, you know, if I think it's going to get out of hand, you know, which it did, then I call.
Okay, well, let's, now, okay, so I want to, now I'll jump into, what is, I think, number seven, with the gentleman threatening to have a firearm or kicked out of the bar, remaining to kick the door?
Yes, he came in, I served him one beer, he seemed fine. Then like maybe four or five minutes later, I noticed, I'm listening to him, and he's just, he's talking like he's having a mental breakdown or something. He's just talking like a nutcase. I'm sorry, but, and I thought, wow, this guy does something wrong. So I thought, I'm not serving him anymore. Well, then when I, you know, he asked for another drink, I said, "No, I can't serve you anymore." Then he went off and said things that I didn't hear, but the doorman heard him. You know, I didn't know he threatened a weapon or anything, I didn't hear that. But the doorman told me later some things that he had said. And I said, "Whoa." And I said, "Well, take him outside, you know, get him to go out and have a cigarette with you." And then I said, "Then get him off to the side as far as you can, get back in the bar and lock the door." So we don't have any problems in the bar, you know? Well, then he went a little nuts outside banging on the doors. And I don't know who called the cops, because I didn't.
You were also on the incident present at the incident that we saw on video?
Yeah.
Okay, from your perspective, what happened?
Well, I don't know what was her name. Name was Stormy, whatever. She was sitting there, and then there was some Spanish girl, big girl with her. She was not a dancer.
We got the wrong incident.
Do I?
The one that was on the video where Ed was hit in the head?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I came into work, the two girls were sitting there. And my shift had started, and I told the girls, I said, you know, and the one was in the back of the dressing room, I think, the little one with the orange outfit. I says, "You've got to go and get dressed now." I said, "My shift's starting, but I've got enough girls." And she just ignored me. Well, I said, "Well, Tia," I said, I said, I got Tina to say something to her. Well, then she got real mouthy with Tia and threatened her and all this stuff. And then she got up and she was going to go to the door. I guess I heard she was going to go change clothes and come back and fight Tia or something crazy. Well, then, I don't know what happened. They had words, and then she went after her. She grabbed a bottle off the bar. So we all went to the side of the bar there and tried to get the bottle out of her hand.
Okay, so when you talk about the shift, are these girls employees?
No, they were never hired. They were just auditions that day.
Okay. Are any of the girls actually employees besides the bar staff?
I don't know.
Okay, so, yeah, that's not your area, okay.
No.
All right, no problem. Just say, if you don't know, you just say, "I don't know." When you come on, though, you have a list of dancers?
Right, I have girls that I've hired for my shift.
Okay, so you've got the girls that were hired for the second shift, and then there's the girls that are hired for the first. Unless there's an opening on the second, generally the first are asked to leave.
Right.
Is that a fair statement?
Yeah.
Okay. Trying to make sure I get the ones that you were. Okay, you've heard what's been said. Is there anything you wish to add at this point?
No, I think you got it all. Oh, the situation with Stormy.
And what date was that one?
That was the 12th of January.
Okay, so number six on the complaint, amended complaint?
Yeah, I'm pretty sure that was one.
JW and AB?
Yeah, yeah, that's it. Let's see, I, let's see. Well, like I said, there was the big Spanish girl there. I didn't know who she was. She was dressed, she wasn't a dancer. But she was sitting next to her. And I told her, I told Stormy, I said, "It's time for you to go," she went. And I didn't serve her any drinks. And she goes, she got real mouthy and stuff. "Go get Ed," and all this stuff. So I did, and then.
Could you speak a little louder, please?
Oh, I'm sorry. She said, "Go get Ed," and I said, "Fine," you know, and then I called. I think, no, I didn't call Nate. That was a different situation. Anyway, I told her she couldn't work. I said, "You can't stay into my shift and sit here and drink. You've got to go home, your shift is over." And she got real ugly about that. So I went and got Ed. Well, then Ed's talking to her, and she's getting mouthy with him, disrespecting him. So I went to reach to grab the glasses to get them off the bar so she wouldn't hit him with the glass, because I didn't trust her. Well, then this Mexican gal grabs me and slams my head down on the bar. I mean, I'm just lucky my glasses didn't break. I was like forehead right here. And then she started to slide me down. Ed grabbed her arms. And then Stormy hit me in the head with her fist. You know, that's, all that happened, so. Then she got more and more violent. We had a board on top of the bar there where we make drinks instead of Plexiglas. She came by and she slammed that thing off and hit me in the leg. It came flying behind the bar and hit me in the leg. They busted up the place pretty good with the pool sticks. And, well, then, of course, it went outside. And then she hit Ed and kicked his truck and, you know, that's pretty much it there. Violent people.
Okay. Do you know who called the police that night?
I think Ed did later, yeah. I think he finally got on the phone and called the police. For sure it was you.
So he responded to the immediate of you being brave?
Well, as soon as, soon as we could, I could get away, then he called. He was holding her arms so she wouldn't drag me down the bar anymore.
Okay. I have no further questions at this time, so I get to redirect.
All right, so you've been there since like 1996, you said. By the sounds of it, employees kind of come and go or dancers come and go. Are you one of the longer-standing employees of the bar?
Yeah.
Okay. Is this a situation, I'll just go back to January or so of this year. This, the gals staying late. It seems to be some of these fights are coming from gals that want to stick around. Is that where this usually comes from?
Um, no, we haven't had too much trouble with that, but, you know, every once in a while you get people that think they don't have to follow the rules, or they can do whatever they want to do. They can walk all over you. And that's the type of person she is.
Okay. All right, and if we're going back to the incidents and talking about those just very briefly, that March 17th one, you said, that, just to remind you which one that is, where the guy takes a little bit of Quirrell, okay? The officer throws a drink in your face on that one, right? The officer testified that the guy, or at least AB being you, told the officer he was intoxicated. Was he drunk?
I don't remember saying that. I don't recall he was really drunk. He was just looking for trouble, mean-minded. The other two seemed fine, you know?
But you don't remember this guy being intoxicated at the time?
Not really, no. He seemed fine, walking straight.
You said the guy on March 14th, that's the guy that's kicking the doors and being crazy. You were there too. Officer said he was highly intoxicated.
Well, see now, he was fine when I first served him. He seemed just fine. I served him one beer. And then after that, he started talking really off the wall. And I thought, this guy's, something's mentally wrong with him. So I thought, I'm done getting him out of here.
Did you remember telling officers he was there about an hour or so?
I don't think he was there that long. I don't remember that.
And the officer said, I think when pressed for how many drinks, I think the committee asks, he said, "A couple." Is that what you recall?
I served him one beer. And then he acted up, and I said, "I'm getting this guy out of here," because I didn't want him in the bar.
Okay.
Talking like that.
Do you work closely with Ms. Nye? Nye is a mom?
She works the earlier shift.
Okay, so you don't actually usually, maybe you see her on shift change?
Right.
All right, because you saw, she was one of the gals on the fight on the video, right?
Right.
Okay. But you don't have much interaction beyond that?
No, just shift changing.
How often are people coming in for auditions? I've heard that word a bunch of times.
Quite often. I usually do it on Monday nights.
Okay.
I'd rather handle it because I'm pretty good at picking out the ones that might be problems. Try to get well-behaved people on, you know?
Because I think we had auditions, no, the Stormy, the January 12th one was not an audition. That was, Stormy was?
She worked the early shift, and she thought she was going to hang around.
But the fight that was on the screen, that was auditions?
They came in the afternoon and auditioned.
Okay.
And they should have left, but they didn't.
I think there's another one that was auditions that we had said. I'll leave it there.
I have a question for you. You know, you've said that you've been working behind the bar since 1996. So as far as I know, many bartenders, whether it's with Dallas or anyplace, a lot of time, if a patron comes in and initially starts acting a little strange, it seemed to me, I mean, you should know already, you know, if a guy had been drinking, but just look his face. I mean, I'm not a drinker, you know? I mean, in my life, I never got drunk. But I do right away by looking at a person and their face if he had been drinking. The way he's acting, the way his looks is. So you have a lot of experience working behind the bar. You have a lot of experience. So, so if you know that person is acting kind of strange, why even give them a drink? Or even the other guy, why give him a beer? So after the guy drank one beer, you tell me that that person, he started acting funny with one beer?
Well, I know, that's why I'm saying this guy had mental issues. It wasn't about alcohol.
You know, everything today is mental issue. It's not. It's not because people drinks, they go from one bar to the next bar. So, and then many bars, I'm talking about within our community, they come in and they serve them. Because they, it could be drunk. But what I'm saying, you have a lot of years of experience working behind a bar. So you should know by looking at client or patrons, the way he looks like. If he'd been drinking, well, I'm not going to serve you. That's the city rules. That's our city ordinance.
But he seemed fine. Some people can really fool you. They'll come in and they, they look just fine, they're straight, and then you serve them one drink, and they're acting up. Well, then, then I got to cut them off.
See, since the fact that?
Some people can fake it really well. You don't see it right away, you know? It happens.
But in many occasions, that's what had been occurred. Why reasons and accidents do occur? Because the person behind the bar is serving. A person came from outside, and the person is already intoxicated. It happens many times throughout our city. It happens. You know, you know I'm a server because you feel sad about it, or I'm going to serve you, and so you drink. But then in relative a matter, the person acted really crazy. So he means if he's a normal person, he's not going to do that. If a guy have one drink, he's not going to react as foolish to make you say, "Look, Dan." But that's what I'm saying, you've been around a long time, worked behind a bar. I think you got a lot of experience.
Oh, yeah, I'm in the town. If I may, I have several questions for you. And it does coincide with what you're saying. Now, what I heard you say, which was concerning to me, and I just need you to follow up on this, that sometimes you don't feel like calling the police because you determine what warrants a call or not. So first and foremost, I need to know what policies you have in place. Because you mentioned, and I'm using your words, this guy seemed nutso.
Yes, he did.
Okay, if I may continue. So he was nutso, and the security guard, or your bouncer, stated he had said something about referring to having a weapon?
Yeah, that was a situation.
And if I may go further then. So in your experience since 1996, if you have a patron who came in that you served one drink, didn't appear inebriated at first, but within one drink, started talking, what you refer to as nutso, brandished, stating that he has a weapon, and you still chose not to call the police? That's my concern.
I didn't know about that right away.
Well, you stated that he said that the doorman told you that?
Well, he told me later, yeah, what he had said. But I didn't know that right away.
So at that point?
I had cut him off before that. And I guess, you know, he said whatever. I didn't hear all that. But I, he didn't like the fact that I cut him off.
But you did state that he was talking, in your opinion, nutso and crazy, which was concerning enough that you would not serve him another drink.
Right, I heard that part.
And that you utilized your bouncer to remove him and lock him out of the establishment. So now we have what you deem as nutso outside the door and could possibly have a weapon. Your security guard, I just, whether he told you at that very moment or not, I guess where I'm going is what protocol do you follow? What policies do you have in place as a bartender to assure that not only are your patrons are safe, you are safe, and that when that person walks out the door, they are safe?
Well, that's the reason why I got the doorman to get him outside so he wouldn't cause any violence in the bar and get in a fight with a customer.
Do you feel you have?
I thought hopefully he'd go away, but he really flipped out and banging on the doors like crazy.
Now, as a bartender, do you feel you have responsibility for that person's well-being once they leave your establishment, whether you served them or you removed them from that establishment? Say they're getting in a car? Just their well-being is?
Yeah, if I thought he was really drunk, I guess I would have tried to get the doorman to get his keys or something.
Yeah, but if you deemed him as nutso, you didn't feel that he needed any, like, medical attention or anything like that?
Yeah, I guess I didn't go that far with it.
Okay.
I was just going to say, you know, when you get into unspecific terms where she may say nutso, there would be standards, I think, from a legal perspective of the bar just constantly calling and saying, "This, this customer's nuts," I think would fit too many bar patrons.
Well, if I may?
Yes, ma'am.
This is a very different circumstance than downplaying and insane. It's, it's just anytime somebody behaved that way. This is a person who had stated they had a weapon. This is a person that needed a call of service to the bar. So that was one part. So thank you for answering those questions. Because a lot of this for me is, you know, and maybe it's something I'm naive to, as I'm not a bartender, that maybe there's critical situations that need attention that maybe you're not calling. And that's one of my biggest concerns. Secondly, I'd like to know, because a lot of these instances that have happened seem to be that you have dancers that, A, you don't know who's really coming in. You're just kind of gauging whether they'll be decent that night or not, may have never even met them. And you have security in place, correct? So what policy, did you ever think of having a policy and change? I mean, in place that, once that dancer's shift is done, your bouncer or security walks them out, they're done. Door is shut, and they cannot come back in. Rather than letting them sit there and serving them drinks. And that's just food for thought. But secondly, I have a question. How many drinks are your dancers allowed to have, whether employees or auditions?
I don't know, a couple, you know? But some can't drink at all, they're not old enough, so.
Okay, but the ones in the instances that we have documented that the officers stated that they were highly intoxicated after a shift?
Well, I didn't serve them.
Who would have served them?
Well, the earlier bartender, but, now, if you're talking about that situation with the fight, the oldest gal was what, 22, I think? And the other one was underage. And I heard through the grapevine that the girl that was old enough had liquor in the car, and the young one was going into the car and drinking it.
Okay, and who monitors that? Does your security?
They weren't, they weren't hired. They weren't working that day. They just came into audition. So she probably drank before she came into audition.
Are you qualified to tell if somebody is drinking before they got into the bar?
I just walked in, so I didn't know, you know, I kind of got hit with everything at once. I wasn't there for the whole thing.
How many dancers do you have on one shift?
It varies. Sometimes I have four or five, maybe six. Sometimes I get up to seven, you know, it just depends.
Are you the only one there managing the six girls and the bar?
Yeah.
Okay, so there's only one person?
I get girls that I can handle. If I feel like I can't.
I think that would be more clarified, because usually either Ed or Lonnie are both there at night with them. And then they've had multiple times, they do have security, one gentleman doing the door on that issue. I think one of the misconceptions is, again, we have to remember the size of the spotlight. It is not a large, it has a 65 capacity. It is not a large, when you think of a gentleman's club such as Silk or even Heartbreakers here in the city, or many of the other ones that come to mind instantly when somebody talks about a gentleman clubs. They have a much larger facility. They are a much larger place that can have a lot more security measures that, for example, with the shift change, and that's something I'll get into a little bit regarding the difference between independent contractors and employees. Because we are limited with certain restrictions that can be placed on an independent contractor. One of the things that we have done to look at this is I am currently rewriting their independent contractor agreement to address several of these issues. But it is a complicated area of the law. For example, several clubs in California and other places, because they exceeded what they were allowed to do when you have somebody as an independent contractor and actually were determined employees, the clubs were actually civilly sued for millions of dollars in loss. Because they went beyond the authority they're allowed to have as a independent contractor versus employee relation.
With that being said, and all due respect, does that independent contractor contract supersede any of the laws that we have or ordinances as far as how much somebody can be served alcohol?
The question I think comes in, older woman, in the fact of how much can I limit them from drinking? So for example, I think I would be well within the right to say that you will not drink in excess, which is an undefined term. I think I'm trying to push it down to a specific number per hour. But I have to clarify whether that will be legally sustainable from something. Because I, I am kind of in the same position as are the owners of these, you know, if they come in as an independent contractor, you still have a duty to perform. You have a duty to do your job, and you're really not doing your job if you're intoxicated.
And with that being said, I'm being a bit facetious on that, because you're doing the legal part of making a contract. I'm talking about, we give you a license here in the city, and you have to abide by that within the confines of that licensure here. So however you're working your contracts outside of that, you have a responsibility here. And that's what I'm trying to determine. Are you doing what you need to do when you're behind the bar? Are you doing what you need to do as the owner of the establishment? And I think that pretty much covers what I have right now.
Oh, my question, I have a questions in reference of, tonight I heard that the employees are out to drink. I heard tonight that the employees are out to drink at the spotlight. This Mr. sits next to you, he said that the employees have the rights, they gave them the chance to. The employees could have one, two, three, four, five, six. I mean, to me, many establishments, many of the good operators, during the periods of the bartender deep beyond the bar, you're not supposed to drink. So if you start allowing whether the dancer or the bartender drinking, well, you're not doing any good for your business, really, you don't. I mean, you kind of caused some, some little problem not controlling your establishment. That's one of them. So to me, that's, that's one of the questions.
Well, I mean, if I could address that. As you saw in the video, you know, the establishment doesn't benefit from having incidents occur. Okay, as you saw, you know, the spot with its limited capacity, when you lose four customers, because essentially if you watch that video again, you will see that four people walked out. Okay, I believe it was three men and one woman that were not part of any of it. That is, that impacts the business. They are both well aware of that. And that is kind of where you run into this push of the whole difference between an employee and an independent contractor. of the whole difference between an employee and an independent contractor. And that's where I'm, we're trying to, you know, that's one of the biggest steps we're taking, is to push that independent contractor position to its limits so that they are unable to do the drinking behind, drinking, even, or having it limited to some level. Obviously, older woman, your question was, is yes, you know, as the bar, if the person does get intoxicated, you as the bartender or bar owner, you have that additional duty, not to serve somebody who's intoxicated. But it comes to a fine line as, you know, the, what is intoxicated defined within the aspect of the drunken disorderly? We look at the DUI statute at a .08, which will have the same characteristics as the officer said during his testimony regarding the bloodshot eyes, slurred speech, and that. And that's a .08. But a body-wise, a .08, you know, for Wisconsin, is a couple drinks... You know, that .08 is not that high as far as the quantity of alcohol consumed. It impacts the motor skills at that level. But is that truly intoxication within the meaning of the statutes?
Chairman Vitale, if I may. When we have sworn officers coming in here tonight stating, based on their experience, seasoned... Seasoned officers that are trained, putting in their reports, highly intoxicated, extremely intoxicated, needed assistance to get into an ambulance. Something's missing here as a bartender or an owner of an establishment, that you're not seeing that, but sworn officers are. And then it's a day late, dollar short, when you have half the force, if not all the force, at your establishment for people with guns and fights and whatnot. And I'm just gonna say one more thing, and this is just more of a statement. I saw three people in a video that took however many minutes breaking up this fight. And it just brought me back to you stating when we warrant whether it needs a call. Yes, it got out of hand, but there should have been a call before three people were wrestling six girls. If you got, if you're talking about your capacity limits in there, it doesn't seem that six girls, or young, six employees, I should say, are being managed. Whether they're independent contractors, that's just... I could say the same thing, I'm a hairstylist. If I can bring somebody into my establishment and rent my chair, and then I'm not responsible for what they do, no.
No, we're not arguing to that.
Well, that's what I'm stating. This is what's bothering me about this and about the testimony and about the reports that we're seeing, is, you know, there's almost an absence of accountability. And I'm not talking contracts. So I'm being a little too long-winded, I'm just gonna leave my statement at that.
No, that's okay. To that point, I'd like to have Ed maybe address some of those issues for you, so you can-
All right, I have a question for you.
Just to make sure we're done with this witness, and maybe we should move through the witnesses, and then we can have this discussion.
Thank you, and I'm sorry I got off track.
By standing there, three times tonight you've been addressing the fact, the capacity. What really has got to do a bigger capacity and a smaller capacity? What really has to do with every situation that you arise? What really has got to do with that? To me, it's a realistic, I call, statement to make because of the capacity of establishment. To me, if a small establishment, then you've got the security for small capacity. For larger capacity, then you have more security. So that's, to me, it doesn't really stand legal on that one. So, go ahead.
All right, do we have any more questions for Ms. Bomback?
I just have a few, if I could, please.
Sure, go ahead.
How many hours do you work a week?
About 28.
38?
About 28.
38.
28.
28.
28.
28, thank you.
I have to think for a minute.
Your voice is so soft.
Sorry.
Sorry. Okay, 28 hours a week. Do you allow dancers behind the bar?
No.
When you're in charge?
Right, I don't want them back there.
Nobody else, possibly the owners?
Right.
But otherwise, you're in charge, basically. Do you always have a security present? Or is that time when security is not present?
Well, yeah, there was times when we didn't have security.
Okay. Are the owners present ever in the bar?
Oh, yeah.
Every day?
Yeah, yeah, they're there.
Okay. Let's see. Is it normal for dancers to quarrel or fight over hours, you might say, or shifts? Is this a normal procedure for them?
No, it's just some that come through, you know? You don't know who you're getting sometimes, and they just get pushy and think they're gonna barrel over you and...
I see, okay.
They're rude and disrespectful, and those are the ones we gotta get rid of.
All right. Do you have any dancers that work full-time?
No, I usually have the night shift, and then there's a day shift. And I usually don't like to use the day shift girls. I don't like them doing doubles, I don't think that's a good idea, you know? I prefer to just have my own girls that I put together. I try to get calm, respectful girls working. I can see through trouble pretty good.
All right, thank you, thank you.
I just, I had a couple of questions. So, you're Audrey Bomback, so is Ed your husband then?
Brother.
Brother, okay. And you said since 1996, so is that pretty much as long as your brothers own the place?
Yeah, yeah.
And you keep saying, "my girls," so you hire and manage the...
Yeah, I take the auditions, I usually do them like on a Monday night. I feel the girls out and ask questions, and I can usually tell by their answer if they're gonna be a problem or not.
So your role in everything is probably a little bit more than your average bartender?
Oh, yeah.
And how many other bartenders do you guys have on staff?
Oh, we have, well, I guess there's three of us now.
Including yourself, so two others?
Yeah.
Okay. And then dancers, you said, kind of come and go, but...
Some stay.
On your shift, you, how many dancers are there?
I can have anywhere from, you know, three or four to five, six, even seven. It's just, you know, if they show up that day or not, or they got problems, or they call in, or...
And then you have the bouncer?
Yeah, I've got a bouncer now.
So, yourself, the bouncer, and at least like four dancers? So at any time, there's like anywhere from six, seven, to maybe even 10 people that are working for you guys there?
No, I don't put that many on, but... Yeah, with the doorman, there could be six, seven, or seven or eight, yeah.
Okay. All right.
Any further questions?
Chairman Vitale, I have, I think, one final question here. When you're vetting what you refer to as the girls, and we talked about that contract, and I don't want to get deep into it, are the girls allowed to drink in their dressing room?
They'll take sodas in there, sometimes they'll take a mixed drink in there, but...
Okay. So they're able to go in the back room where there would be an underage dancer back there with a drink?
Well, I watch that pretty close.
How do you watch it if you're at the bar?
I go back there once in a while and check things.
Okay, so...
But usually the girls that drink are out, they don't bring them back there. Usually they're just sitting at the bar.
So there's no required place that you have to drink if you're going to have a drink on shift?
Yeah, well, I prefer they do it out in the bar, I tell them that.
And the legal dancers are also there with the underage dancers in the dressing rooms together?
Yeah, right now I have-
There is no separate dressing room for them?
No, there's just one dressing room.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions from the committee members? So, counsel, now we have the next witness.
We'll start, would you want to start, you want to start?
You want.
Either way.
Well, what do you want me to say? Been hearing some with stuff here.
All right, so, let me, yeah, please raise your right hand, so she can swear you in.
Do you solemnly swear that the testimony you shall give in this matter shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Rebecca?
Yeah.
Quick question. Since they're both co-owners, can they both be sworn at the same time? And can we, are we allowed to ask them both questions at the same time? Or do we have to do it individually?
I feel like we kind of have such a tendency to get off the rails that it's kind of easier sometimes to compartmentalize. I, doesn't matter to me, though.
Well, the reason I'm asking is I'm gonna ask both of them the same question. That's why I'm asking, because they're both owners.
Would it be appropriate to have counsel ask questions, and then ask questions, and then they can both be open? The floor could be open from there, would that be?
Yeah, I can swear in the other one.
Well, I'm saying like, you'll ask-
I get where you're going.
And then-
And I'll speed it up.
Sure. Want to go one at a time, or do we want to do both of them?
We can, why don't we swear both in, so we just have that done? I'll ask, first I'll kind of, I'll go with Ed to follow up, to kind of explain kind of the second shift and other aspects. Lonnie, kind of explain more of the first shift aspects, because I think that's how you've got it pretty much divided. And then we could open it up to questions for-
Do you want to raise your right hand? Lonnie?
Both of you guys, yeah.
Do you solemnly swear that the testimony you shall give in this matter shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Were, any other questions here?
I'm gonna be late. Thank you. All right. Yeah.
Okay. So, Ed, how long have you and Lonnie owned the Spotlight?
Since 1972. We just celebrated our 49th year September 1st.
Okay, now it always hasn't been located at the current location?
Around 69th and Greentown, but then you moved over to 65th and Greentown.
Okay. And so you've been in business running a similar type operation since essentially 1972?
Yes.
Okay. During that course of time, have you had any other summons and complaints issued at this location?
Not that I can think of, no.
Okay. Can you recall any at the previous location?
No, just when they, the city came and had us moved, that was the only thing, and that was really like legal. Nothing to do with licensing.
So, just real quick, because we don't want to get into the weeds of it, explain how you hire and work with the staff that's at the bar?
With the bartenders, excuse me?
Bartenders and the dancers and the doorman.
Okay. Well, bartenders, first of all, they have to have a bartender's license. And we train them to operate in our fashion, I guess. The doormen, I always tell them, you want people to feel comfortable. I don't need a bully at the door. I want somebody who can defend himself or run. Look, call the police. You don't have to prove anything to anybody. That's pretty much what I've always told them. And as far as a customer goes, if a customer is causing a problem with the dancer, our first line of defense is the dancer. She should be able to handle it, if she can. When she starts to look over at the doorman like, "Help," you know, we want you to let the bartender know that you're gonna go and talk with this gentleman. So she's aware, so she can call the police if something breaks out. Go over there and talk to him and tell him, "Look, sir, you can't be doing that, or we'll have to ask you to leave." And then just leave him alone. And usually, they'll comply. A lot of times, they stop and think about it, and, okay. If it happens again, then we ask the gentleman to leave. And the bartender is aware that this is happening at the same time, because if there would be a confrontation, we want somebody ready at the phone.
Okay, do you have a policy to address the issue of when to call and when not to call the police?
Well, we try and handle things as peacefully as we can. If a fight breaks out, we call the police.
Okay, and is that a standing instruction to basically all the bartenders?
I would say so, yeah, yeah.
Okay. There were several incidents, and I'm just gonna kind of go through them real short. We don't have to go into a lot of details. I think the factually they've been kind of, that were there. I'm actually gonna state, out of going into details on any one, except for what is noted in the amended complaint as number nine. And this is the Narcan incident in the revival. Okay? Now, we didn't bring the bartender in, but can you tell us a little bit about her without naming any names? How long has she worked for you?
I guess about three or four years, something like that.
Okay. And... Is she...
Counsel, if you want to explain it, I'm not gonna object generally to the explanation.
Okay.
And then if you can maybe just confirm with your client the information?
Okay.
If that would be easier.
That would be easier.
Sure.
When you first received the amended complaint, you introduced me to this bartender? And I had an opportunity to chat with her about everything?
Yes.
Okay, and I take her basically outside of your presence?
Yes.
Okay. And I told you when I talked to her that it was in part to see if she would be voluntary to take a drug test?
Yes.
Okay, did I tell you if she would or wouldn't?
Yes.
What did I tell you she said?
She said she would.
Okay, and if I told you today that I talked to her again before this hearing, if she would take a drug test and said, "Yes, she would," would that be consistent with what you know?
Yes.
Do you know her to be using drugs?
No. At one time, apparently, she did, because she has this stuff that she has to take. She has to be tested all the time.
Okay, so she might have a history, but she was tested, and she's on certain medication that actually causes an adverse reaction should she take any type of illegal drugs?
Right.
That's your understanding?
Yes.
Okay. I'm gonna leave that issue at that point. I think that's general enough, unless there's any specific... You've heard overall, and I'm gonna use you as the overall, not the instance specific, the overall issue regarding the police and the frequency, is that something that's changed?
I feel this year it has.
And why would you say that?
Well, I don't, it's because of COVID, because of the lack of employees. I've had to allow some people to work, maybe that I wouldn't normally let them work. I find that a lot of times the customers are even a little more, I don't know, aggravated sooner or what? But this first six months of this year has been the worst six months of my whole career in this thing. And it really, really makes me wonder, but... That's just my feelings, all right? I don't know if there's any legitimacy to that or not, but that's just how I feel.
Okay, so I want to look at, again, the bigger picture business issues. You've also looked at doing some remedial, addressing some of these incidents that have come up.
Yeah.
So, you kind of got them all thrown that there was at this level. I mean, you knew there were these incidents, but when they all came together, did you look at doing any type of metal detecting or any of that?
Yes, in fact, while you had looked into this one that was an arch that went over the doorway, and I guess it won't work in our place, so we may have to go to a handheld just to check people when they come in. Also, a card identification thing. We need to get one of those so that when a person comes in, and as far as I'm concerned, I don't care what age you are, and take your ID card and swipe it and take your picture at the same time. So we have something on file for a few months, because I want people to know when they come in, they're not just another face in the crowd, but they actually have a name and we can identify them. Because when you're dealing with the public, they come walking in, and you hope everybody's fine and friendly, but you don't really know for sure. So this is one way to do it. And that just reminds me of- And that just reminds me of another thing. We do have cameras all over, and that was put in for security. And one of the things I always tell the doormen when they're checking at the door, if a couple of guys come in, they're whooping it up, you know, they're kind of having a good time. Not, they're not drunk, they're having a good time. And you want to say that in some respects, but on the other hand, I says, we want to take a little bit of the wind out of their sails. So take the ID card, put it up by the camera, you don't say nothing to them. Give it back to them, say, "Fine, enjoy your evening," and let it go. The thing is, they know we have a picture of them. And it just kind of makes them stop and think before they get carried away or get too wild.
Now, do you cater to bachelor parties?
We don't really have any. It's not that I wouldn't, but generally, we've had a couple that's about it. I don't really promote it. But if we do, we usually try and, there's usually a leader of the pack, that we call it, and we ask him to keep control on these people. If somebody has to be asked to leave, we don't want our doorman to have to tell him to leave. We want you to take him out and leave. So instruct your people that you're in charge of the party. We pick out one person pretty much to do that, so that it alleviates us from that. Because they'll usually listen to a buddy better than they will somebody else. But we, it's, bachelor parties are, we even had one this year, so it's not very often.
Okay. Whenever the police have come, have you ever not cooperated with them?
No, we, we, I feel we've had a good rapport with the police for these 49 years. We've done well, I've been as far as that concerned. Everybody has their own little opinions, and that's going to happen. You don't let one little incident ruin a relationship, you might say either. Because I've had, I had an officer who got all over me one night, because I believe this, my, this was at the old club. I was letting a gentleman out, and it was like 30 seconds after closing, because I, I checked, and I still couldn't believe it. That officer rolled me out and rubbed me up and down, and I thought, "You've got to be kidding me." I didn't like him at that moment, because of what he was doing. I thought he was going too far, but he was within the law.
That incident was what, 26?
Yes.
26 years ago?
Probably longer than that, but it always stuck with me. I was like, geez.
But you've maintained, even if they come in asking just to see the tapes regarding something, you don't even know what happened? You've always given them access?
Yes, they have access to it, yes.
And they have access to all the video surveillance?
Yes.
You've never had the attorney say, "No, I need to see it first?"
No.
When you're talking about these independent contractors coming in and just staying, because we didn't get into the dancers themselves, if they're hired as an independent contractor, how do you try and exercise a level of control over their conduct? And what changes do you think are going to improve based on what you've seen here? Sorry, that's a very open-ended question?
That's a very big question, yeah. Well, we have certain rules that we, in the club, and we try and keep them in line with that. They have to hopefully show up on time, which a lot of them don't, so that's always a problem. But the type of business it is, I can't be all that picky and choosy sometimes. So even if a girl is continually late, if a girl has another job and she's coming in afterwards, I make allowances for that, because I don't want to interfere with her other occupation, whatever that may be, you know? But some girls do work as waitresses, or they work someplace else. they have a rotation, and we want them to get up and dance and do their job, and then walk around and collect their tips, and that's how they make their money.
And you've, you've heard some of the issues regarding, some of the girls with shift change. What steps have you taken to enforce that shift change is shift change and no working?
Well, every club probably runs things a little differently. I'm sure they do. And I've had girls come to me from all different types of clubs. And depending where they come from, sometimes I have to keep those girls aside and let them know, "Hey, look, this is not a totally nude club. You can't do that here," you know, this type of thing. That's just one of the issues. And as far as shifts go, some girls can work what I call a double shift. Most can't. Because either they get tired, and at the second, on the second shift, they start missing their sets and screwing up the rotation as far as the dancing schedule. So I always try then, just keep them on one shift and then do a second shift. Just keep your shifts separate. You're fresh, you're more energetic, but if you've been there for, you know, 10 hours, you're going to start drooping. And I prefer they just keep two separate shifts.
Thank you. Do you want me to go through, Ed, real quick, I mean, I'm sorry, Lonnie, real quick, and then you do the cross?
That'd be my preference, but I'll defer to the committee.
No problem.
Okay.
Okay. Lonnie, you heard kind of Ed's testimony and everything that's gone on tonight. What differences are there on first shift versus second? I mean, you mainly run second shift?
What's the difference? I don't know. Well, society is this tall. I hate to kick the can down the road, but it's changed 100%. West Dallas doesn't even put the crimes in the paper anymore. You know that. I mean, I read the paper every day. My wife bought a new Kia, or I bought her a new Kia. In one month, you had the windows smashed out, in one month, twice. I mean.
Chairman Vitale, if we could stay on point?
Yeah, yeah, go ahead.
It's, it's a different society.
Okay, so.
And I'm not, I'm not diminishing our problem, and we, we've had more problems in the last year than we had in 49 years. I mean, and there were 14 strip joints down here. I don't know if you know that. There were 14 of them. We never had a problem, hardly ever. So, I mean, I'm not throwing the can down the road, like I say, but it just changed. Society as a, as a whole has changed. It was in the paper the other day, there were 3,500 cars stolen in Milwaukee. That's almost impossible.
So let me get you back on, to point here.
But I mean.
Regarding, regarding this, with this change, you, you, so you and Ed are.
First of all, I don't, I don't bartend. My ears are so bad, I can't even hear the people when they order a drink. So I don't bartend anymore. I'm the maintenance guy, and I do the, the stuff that needs to be done around there. But I can't, I can't hear somebody order a drink. I mean.
And how old are you?
It's embarrassing, but what are you going to do?
How old are you now?
Huh?
How old are you?
77.
Okay.
And these things are 5,000 bucks. That's my third set already, so I mean.
So let me, let me just take that a little bit further. You, you and Ed are both, you know.
Like I say, it's.
An older group, age group, and you have had the place listed for sale, because you both would like to get out of the business. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. During that, though, you've had some people approach you that you did not feel were appropriate for the, the bar business, correct?
Correct, yeah.
Okay, and, and why would you say they weren't appropriate?
Their ideas of how to run a bar and what they really plan to do, that it just, I don't want to turn it into that. You know, it's, it's just, I just don't feel they have the right attitude. Maybe that's the best way to say it.
Okay. So both of you, though, are, are ready to kind of retire from the business on, on one degree?
Absolutely.
And move on? In part, because of what you've said and what we've seen, is, is that there are some issues with the people that are applying. Have you, you've had the same issues on first, about the quality of people applying for the positions?
Well, those days are gone, too.
So.
I, I worked at A.L. Smith. I hardly was connected with the bar, other than doing maintenance and rehabbing. I worked at A.L. Smith for 30 years, a tool and die maker, so. I never intended to be here 77 years old, running a bar yet.
Okay, I have no further questions.
Any questions for the committee members?
Oh, Nick.
I have some very briefly. Okay, and I'll try to be brief about where I'm going with this, but I don't need the logistics of it all, but do the dancers have written contracts? Or how does that, how do you bring them on?
Most of them have them, not all of them. In fact, we're working on that now, because it has to be revised, because apparently the contracts I had aren't up to par. The laws have changed a little bit, and I've had these for several years. But usually what we do is we have them sign this, and it's a working agreement, so they get a 1099 at the end of the year.
Okay, so they get their, their tax information or whatever it may be? But some of them don't have this, and is that the, the people that are auditioning or on a trial basis?
Right.
Okay. And is there anything in those documents, or I guess the contract as you had it, that you would consider to be able to be enforced, like, hey, and correct me if I'm wrong, Counselor, but like, if I'm having my ceiling fixed and putting some drywall up, I'm having a contractor come in to do it, and if that guy shows up drunk at my place, I'm going to say, "Bud, you're not doing work here today." And so is there anything that you use or can do to enforce something along those lines, or things are getting out of control?
I've had girls, in fact, one comes to mind as you mention this, beautiful girl, I love her, but I said, "You can't work for me anymore." She just had too many problems, and I believe she was on drugs. And she'd leave in the middle of her shift, or she'd come in late, or one thing or another. Finally, I just had to get rid of her, because I said, "You're just, you're messing up the business." I mean, you just can't have somebody like that on your staff for any length of time. I worked with her, I tried to get her to come around, but it just, it just didn't work.
And you, you have these auditions, I guess, how, what, what kind of work do you do? Or does Audrey do to kind of vet these gals before?
Okay, well, first of all, we have the auditions. We have them live onstage. It's no private auditions or anything like that. So if they could, first of all, they got to get up there and be able to dance, you know, and get up on the stage. I've had a girl already, I remember years ago, I hired this girl, I thought, "Okay, fine." But came to get up on the stage, she couldn't do it. She just couldn't do it, whether, for what reasons, I don't know. She was embarrassed or just scared or whatever. So she just never got up there. So we make a point, they have to come in and audition. We put them in front of the crowd, like, usually it's on a Monday, and put them up in front of some people, so see if they could perform.
Is there like a meeting or an interview or anything first?
No, we have them, we get, check their IDs and stuff like that, and then we have them get up and dance.
Okay, so it's like.
We figure there's no sense going through all the paperwork. You can't do anything.
So somebody could show up on a, you said it's mostly Mondays, so let's just put it down on Monday. Somebody could show up on a Monday night and say, "I'm interested in trying out."
Yes.
I don't think I have any other questions.
Any questions for the committee members?
Chairman Vitale?
Yes.
Shocker. Sorry, guys. I'm going to bring it back to what was in the reports, this one employee. Am I correct in saying, is it Small?
Samo.
Okay.
She's Cambodian.
Okay, and is she an employee?
Yes.
Okay, and how long has she been with you?
About three or four years.
Three or four years, okay. This is the same person that was in the fight?
Yes.
With the high heel?
Yes.
Okay, and the same person who had the drug overdose?
Yes.
Okay. Going to your policies, it was mentioned by your counsel that she said she would take the test.
Yes.
Did she take a drug test for you?
We threatened to do that this week, I believe, isn't it?
One of the, the timing, with how quick this came up, my schedule, I did not follow through and try to get her to the right place, but I can have her go and take one. She said she would still be willing. And I learned a little bit more about her background, which I'm not going to go into here in public, so I'm, I'm very comfortable that we will be able to go in, and we can have that done if the committee would so like.
Okay, so no, go ahead.
For briefly, we did meet before this meeting, and I, I had said, "For my purposes as a prosecutor, that's not something I would be overly interested in."
Right.
I can certainly understand the intent and the, the goal behind that, but I would not be pushing that issue.
Right, and, and the reason I asked, and I had agreed with Attorney Servin on that, I just wanted to know, as the owner of the establishment, what follow-through you do? That was really the purpose of my line of question on that. So, Small is one employee who's been with you those number of years. How many employed dancers do you have?
I'd say there's probably a total of around 15 to 20.
15 to 20?
You know.
And those are.
Could you make the distinction if not?
And I'm, I'm talking about paid employees that have been with you, not independent contractors?
Oh, no, no, it's not that many then.
Okay, so how many employees do you have versus auditions?
I have three, four, probably about four employees.
Okay, four employees.
That are dancers?
No, not dancers. They're, they're bartenders and doormen.
Okay, so most of your dancers, if I, if I am correct, is, is probably just auditions, independent contractors?
Right.
Okay. And on a regular shift, how many bartenders are there?
Usually one.
Okay. And Audrey is your primary bartender for second shift?
For second shift.
And you have only one for, for shift as well?
No, there's Desi and Samo.
Okay. All right, so when.
And myself.
Okay.
I fill in wherever I have to.
All right, and I was more concerned with, you know, the criteria of what you, you know, what your policies are. And I think what I really got lost on is, you know, you mentioned on-time rotation, more the business part of it. I guess for a licensing body, and as a vice chair here, I'm really concerned about the, the instances that have taken place. And I'm sure you are, too. One of the, the things that were mentioned, was mentioned was, you know, COVID, a lot of the things that are going on this year. I totally can appreciate that, but when things like that change as a business owner, as does, your policy should change, too. And it looks like your vetting has really gone to looser standards, which may be part of the problem. But you answered my questions. I was more concerned with the employee that you had and have, and if you did a follow-through with that, with the drug testing, or if she's still under your employ, considering these are pretty serious charges.
We've been working with her. She, when she first started for us, she could hardly speak English. And we've, she's done well with that, and she's done quite well on her own. She's had some rough times, and she's come through, and we're sticking with her, I guess, trying to help her along in that respect.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Mr. Chair. So I want to get back to the one that bothered me the most, and this was the fight that I didn't see any activity go on until 9:14, according to the police records. Started at 10, 10 minutes after 9:00, and I watched, I don't know how many people trying to break that up. I'm assuming both of you were involved in trying to break that fight up?
I was probably the first person to get involved, just because when this girl grabbed the beer bottle, and when I seen her running after somebody, I went the other way and blocked her and got the bottle away from her. And after that, I was busy. I just, I had no time to do anything.
So my question is.
So I didn't call the police, I don't believe.
Andrea, is that her name?
Audrey.
Audrey. Audrey, I saw her get involved in it, too.
Yeah.
Why wasn't she, since she was one of the last ones to get involved, why wasn't she on the phone with the police while you guys were both trying to break this thing up with a couple other people?
Maybe because she's my sister, and she saw her brother, and she was just going to go help. I, I can't really answer that.
Because that's kind of concerning, because it went on for a long time, and then the police finally did get called, and then they came when, basically, it was already finished. And.
Yeah, yeah, pretty much.
And, I mean, I'm, I'm going to use my father as an example. My father is an Army veteran, 76 years old, and he thinks he's invincible. My dad could not fare any better than you guys did, so.
I forgot that.
So my, and was there a doorman on duty when that happened?
You know, I don't really remember if there was or not.
Because the, the only other person I remember seeing was that gentleman with the white shirt.
White shirt.
Getting involved in there.
Boyfriend to the bartender we were training at that time, that's why he got involved.
Okay. You know, something like that, somebody should have been, I don't know, you guys need a policy or something that says, hey, something like this going down, I don't care who it is, one person who's in charge should be calling the police. Before they get involved. Because we could have had police possibly there before it even finished.
That would have been nice.
Another question I have for you. Did you have something?
Sorry, no.
You guys said with COVID and you're having problems with people working and, you know, finding good people. If you're having problems with that, why not consolidate and cut down on hours for a while until you can get employees to come back, like a number of businesses around here have done? They've closed certain days, they've cut down their hours, they've gone, you know, to smaller shifts. Why haven't you guys thought of doing that?
We've thought about it, but the problem, part of it is too, a lot of the girls have other jobs and they can only work in certain shifts. And it's like, if I close anything, I'm hurting somebody along the line someplace. So it's just the nature of the business, I guess. And I guess I don't want to close down hours. I want to keep it going because we do have it up for sale. And I want it to be operating so it's a turnkey operation for whoever takes it over.
That leads me to my next question. You said you have it up for sale and you've been picky about people who you want to sell it to. Are you trying to sell it only as a strip club or are you open to somebody taking that away and just opening up as a bar?
They give me my price, I don't care what they do with it.
Okay, that's why I wanted to see if you were just looking and vetting people, keeping it as a I just wanted to see if you were just keeping and vetting all people that only want to keep it as a strip club, so that's why I was asking.
I've had some people come as a strip club and I really question their values, you know, and I think I just don't think they're gonna last.
Could I follow up with that question?
Yeah.
Were you approached by the building next to you, the former, with the kitchen idea?
Just recently, I guess, so he called Lonnie and talked to him about it. Because at one point, we wanted to buy that kitchen area, it used to be the old Windup Cafe. Right, it's between Crowdaddy's and Austin, I'd say. And we wanted to buy that kitchen so that we could get that up and running and have a restaurant right there. And also put a pass-through window because we share a common wall with that property. And we thought, remember when Jimmy Tatro, we used to own it, he had a restaurant there and he served pizza. And at night, he would just take everybody from the bar, close the bar and run them into the pizza place and sell them pizza. And I thought, you know, that's a good idea. The idea of having food with the bar, of course, is a good idea anyway.
Chairman Vitale? You go right ahead. Yes, please do.
Are you finished, Tracy?
No, I have one more question.
Okay.
You guys said that the bartenders, dancers are allowed to drink, okay?
Yes.
And I know of a number of bar owners here in West Dallas who do not allow their employees to drink while they are on duty. Have you guys ever thought about doing that?
I've gotten rid of people who drank too much because they didn't know when to quit. But to just tell the bartenders they can't drink, well, with Audrey, it probably wouldn't matter, she has probably one or two years all night long, that's about a bottle light, she has that, usually she drinks water. The other bartenders, Tia, I don't know, she quit, she's supposed to have quit drinking, so I really haven't seen it lately with her.
I'm more thinking about, because some of the situations have been with dancers, saying, hey, when you're dancing, you can't drink. When your shift's over, you know, you don't let them stay after their shift's over, correct?
Well, when their shift is, we like to, you know, if they're having a drink, finish it up with your friend or whatever and then leave. Because a lot of girls, while they're sitting there, they still try and collect tips from people. And that interferes with the night shift. So unless you're working, I just assume you're not happy in the morning.
Alderman, I think one area we could look at though, based on that, would be that during an audition night or when they come in to first audition, that they're not allowed to drink. Because it seems, you know, we've got at least three of these related to audition, so I think that would be a enforceable limit that while you're auditioning, you're not technically an employee and we're saying you can't drink. I don't think that would be a problem to go to that level.
I have one more question. How often is the doorman working or a security guard working?
Right now, we're shorthanded, but normally we have one every day. That's what we've always sought after.
From, for both shifts?
No, just for the second shift.
Oh, okay.
They come in at 8 o'clock at night. During the day, you're getting mostly guys that are getting off from work and they stop and do a few drinks. And when they go home, they're pretty much done.
Okay.
If there's any problems, it's usually at night. And that's when I want the doorman, if somebody comes to the bar and they're wobbling and trying to get through the door, come in. Bad enough, you can't come in. We want the doorman to stop them right there, we don't want them coming to the club. So that's one of the things on that.
Thank you, that's all I have then, thank you.
Thank you, thank you. From what you've indicated, I'm concerned because it doesn't sound like you have a policy, a policy in place for employees or contractors when you hire them. Basically, when you hire them for employment, and that concerns me, or you don't have a policy for their dismissal if they don't follow the rules. I think a stupid business always has somewhat a policy regarding this to protect yourself as well as to protect the employees. Have you ever considered anything like this?
While we're working
This would be a document that they'd have to sign.
No, no, this, they have, they have an independent contractor agreement currently. It is, I don't want to badmouth former representation of them, so we'll leave it at that. It is something that unfortunately, you know, I'm not an expert, expert in the field, but from an employment area, I can look at something and go, we need this, we need this, we need this. And then I have to verify that with an employment attorney who actually does these so that I'm making sure that essentially they're gonna have quite a few limitations. And any girl that is gonna remain an independent contractor there is gonna have to follow these rules. Part of that will be including not just the dancer rules, but the additional rules that are in 125 and within the city's code. That way, there is no dispute about, look, this is what's expected, this is what's allowed by ordinance and where you were going with this of, this supersedes a contract. So you are working in the bar business, you have to follow these rules. If you don't, we're gonna get rid of you. That is one thing these gentlemen have done, is if the person becomes a problem, they have no problem letting them go. There have been others, the one bartender, and I don't want to keep saying her name for other reasons. They, you know, she has stuff that we are confident of her not using because of other factors that I do not want to go into in an open forum. So those are the types of things that we can implement and are working on implementing. Again, they hired me kind of looking at this from an overall view. I cannot recall how long you've been on the committee, but I think it's been a pretty long time if I remember. Because I used to do this back in the late 90s, representing a lot of bars in the city. And one of the things that we do want to look at is making sure that you're not getting phone calls, the police aren't coming down unnecessary. That the gentlemen who have been running this bar for an extremely long time, whether it's this location or the other location, are in full compliance with all the various rules that go. And as you pointed out effectively, gentlemen, you're not 40 years old. And even as a 50-year-old vet, I know that feeling because it is one of those that, you know, you do not have necessarily the presence that is needed. I don't know how familiar you are with the bars, I mean, to that, but in a situation of de-escalation, and I think the city attorneys may know this better than the officers and that, you want a physical presence that's enough to back it up if it goes. And without that physical presence, I think where Audrey was saying that they feel they can walk on this, owners, they can walk on this, I think that's where some of that attitude is coming from. Because you don't have a physical presence that can stand there like when they were younger gentlemen, that will be like, hey, you don't want to get stupid, okay? And that is something that does play a role. So as you go in, and I guess my summation on this, if you don't mind?
I don't mind, I do have some questions briefly before we get into that and I don't know if any of the
You know, Counselor, to me, it's in some way very relevant. You addressed the fact of, you know, the age of the bar owners, you know, I mean, of the owners. To me, it's kind of realistic, really, because the fact is that if you already have actually a daughter which can kind of run the bar per se, I mean, I'm not sure who's really in control at this time, really, I'm not. Because the fact is that it's been occurrences, not just because of the age. This has been occurring before the age, in the 50, the age of 50 or 60, and the spotlight has been having a trend backwards, it's been occurring occasionally. And to me, it's not just a few events that occur and fights, I mean, it's been, it's been something that's been in the making for quite some time, you know, so to me, it's really, I appreciate it because I'm 73 myself, you know, so so I'm not going to make a statement or an issue because of the age, really, the age. I don't think it has, you know, an impact completely, you know, if a person has, you know, it could be anybody, has dementia for any reason, well, then fine, the person is out of it completely. But the fact is that if I'm selling a building, an establishment, an operating, operation, existing building, you know, I don't know who the person, say buys my house or any business, whoever comes around, I don't know the person who is, the relative bring that person, so how he's gonna be, I have no idea if he's gonna be a good neighbor from next door, the same thing with a business place. I'm not gonna raise a question and say, well, I'm gonna not sell it to this business guy that is interested to acquire my building. And then at the same time, the same time, the person could be a good person, a good businessman, but the fact is, he's not sure if he's getting his license, the guy that is buying it. You know, that's a question here. So maybe two influential individual or business people, they like to acquire the property, but the fact is, they don't know what kind of business is gonna be there.
Chairman Vitale?
Yes.
If I may, and I'm sorry for interrupting you, but kind of to coincide with what you were saying and to summarize it is, yeah. You have a responsibility regardless how many years you're in business, whether it's one or it's 50. And I congratulate you on going as far as you have, but we have expectations, we have laws that we have to secure, at least secure public safety. These issues are very serious. And we need to consider that. If times have changed, anything's changed, it's your responsibility as an owner, regardless how old you are, to make those changes to prevent what's happening at this establishment. And that's all I have to say, you said you had some housekeeping?
Just very minor housekeeping matters if I could, okay. Mr. Bonbeck, do you have the complaint in front of you, the amended complaint? Okay, so number three, you are, you and Lonnie own the business, the spot, issued class B license and a public entertainment permit, correct?
Yes.
The premises located at 6424 to 6426 West Greenfield?
Yes.
All right, is that information on number three correct?
Yes, it is.
All right, and then number four, you're the agent for that license?
Yes.
And number five, you previously held, you've had license, liquor licenses and public entertainment licenses previously in years past, correct?
Yes.
Last year included?
Many years.
All right, I just want to make sure, I know there was denial across the board of the complaint, but I took that to mean the factual issues as opposed to the licensing boilerplate issues, is that?
That is correct.
All right, very good, I have no further questions then.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, hold on.
When did you officially put your business up for sale? And is it currently listed now?
It's, I don't have it listed, we had it listed for a while and we had one offer on it.
When was that?
It's about two years ago.
Okay. Thank you.
And then we took it off the mark and we just put signs up on the building and then just for sale by owner.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions, the committee members? At this time, we'd like to go on closed sessions.
Closing arguments?
Yeah, closed argument.
I can be very brief, I mean, how it would typically work in court is I would go first, Counselor would go second and I would have rebuttal, I'm fine if you want to say your piece and I'll just
Sure.
Do it, okay.
Alderman, we understand the issues are very serious, that no one's downplaying any of that. We understand that the business has to get updated. It has to be back to a level of proactive on several issues. There may have to be management style changes beyond what is normal, such as all different types of options, which we are in current discussion regarding. I think in the short time that the remedial efforts of one, getting a solid, legally sound contract with these independent contractors will be a major reduction in issues. I think the next issue, unfortunately, I've been looking for the old school, because I would date myself too, is where you had the camera and the ID and the person would walk, you'd put it in, the ID, the camera would show the person showing the ID. And also then cut to the video would then record the ID that they showed. A lot of the newer technology out there, unfortunately, that I have come across and looked at is focused on building databases. I believe those issues start to impact privacy rights because they're more interested in tracking to the cloud and then you don't know where that information goes. I believe in personal privacy to a very high degree. So that is one of the things, there will be something that records every single person's ID that comes in. That is a major deterrent, as Mr. Bonbeck had stated, as Lonnie would agree, and as my experience has shown, to people being stupid. When you've got their actual ID recorded, so that way if the police do have an issue, they know exactly, this is the guy, and the reason I like the video better than the current ones is this is the guy, but everybody won't give you the same description. Whereas if I look at a video of the person, not just an ID, I can look and say the person was wearing the white shirt with the shorts and this was the person involved. I don't remember much beyond that, but now I can look and I've got the ID of the picture of the person at the same time showing their ID. So there's not a dispute from a legal aspect of going into court. Consistently, Ed and Lonnie and Audrey have been cooperative every time the police have been there. They have worked to build a relationship with the police over the years by providing anytime the security equipment. The cameras are very inclusive and do cover a lot of the area, far more than you saw. This isn't one or two camera system, how many cameras are there?
There's a total of 16.
There are 16 cameras on premise that can pretty much
Outside and inside.
And that. You know, they own the parking lot that's behind, so they understand that there's a responsibility there. So, but that's also changed more recent, not as recent, but relatively recently, where it used to be you had zero authority. Now the courts have, I think, expanded the definition of premise. So that is something we're also going into. A lot of these issues have changed since I was actively doing this, and since they've actively needed an attorney to look at this, to kind of help them get back to where it needs to be. And that's what they're doing as a proactive measure, not to downplay what's going on. I heard a lot of interesting suggestions that came out tonight, even indirectly by the tone, the style of questions. I think a lot of those are very good to implement, and I think they could. There are things that I hadn't looked at, or, and I can tell you from my conversations with both these gentlemen, they hadn't looked at. I think they will be very effective in a different way, and that is one of the advantages of this. We are not unwilling to change whatever we need to change to make it so there's not a problem. You know, we aren't sitting here saying, we know best. We are more than willing to continue to work with the committees, we are more than willing to continue to do what's needed, and hopefully, we will find somebody to buy the dang property. But, that's another, another whole story. We do want to continue working with the city. We've had a great relationship overall. Nothing's perfect, but overall, it's been good for 40-some years, almost 50. And I think we can get the spot back to where it is less of, you know, less of a frequency of call, unless they're at the bar calling, saying, these are the problems that the committee would like us to call the police on, because they do become a thing. So that's, you know, when Audrey's hesitating, there's always that of, when is it appropriate to call the bar versus, or the police when it's not? If we're told on one hand that, yes, you need to call the police for an incident, but then it's held against, now, those are more minor, these are not minor, and I'm not saying they're minor, okay? Please understand that. We will find that balance, to make sure that not only is the public protected, the new buildings that have gone up in the area aren't disturbed, the residential change in that whole area, that this remains a, as long as they're running, a effective business that is not a hindrance or blight to anybody, nor has problems that become an issue. It is open to any types of changes, should the right person come along. And, but until then, we will do whatever is needed to be a good neighbor and a good citizen of West Dallas. And they will take those steps, and if there's any other steps, we will be willing to more than here and probably adjust and take. With that, I will turn it over to my colleague.
Thank you, Consul.
All right, I'll be pretty brief about it. When I've been on this committee, or the, one of the advisors for the committee for a few years, and calls come to me various different ways, from police, or from the older persons, or we get calls, and, or names just start sticking out. And I don't know if the spot was really one that had come up all that often, until January started rolling around. In January, and February, and March, and April, and May, and June, and then, and then at that point, I'm starting to get emails from the officers, saying, okay, we're having problems, we've got to figure something out. And I think Officer K testified that it seems like it's once a month, and I think that's kind of shakes out how the complaint does. We have January, March, March, May, June, July, August. And it has been getting more, I guess, uniform or consistent, and that's concerning. And I think when I look at the totality of the argument, or the complaint here, what I think it shows is, is kind of like an equation or a math problem. We have two inputs that equal an output. We have employees or contractors that are engaged in some of these issues, or are creating problems internally. And then we have some issues that result in some over-service, or people being served too much, whether it's going to be at the bar, or before they walk in, and then they get a drink, and they start acting nuts, or whatever it may be. And when you put those two together, then we have this kind of spiraling, as we're seeing at the spot, of a lack of control and worsening control there. And I think that's really what my concern is with the bars, is the control. And at some point, it seems to have been under control. And maybe the game is changing, or maybe the people are changing, or maybe one of those two, I suppose, could be the truth, but what it really boils down to is that the bar is responsible for the output there. And there could be any number of things that create that equation, or make that equation what it is, but the bar is responsible for that control getting out of whack. We're having employees on January 12th getting into fights. January 20, or May 24th, there's the potential employee theft, and the Narcan, I won't even go too far into that. June 7th, the fight with the bouncer. June, July 22nd, the fight with employees, that's on the video. August, dancer goes out to the guy's car and gets shot. These seem to be just escalating, to the extent that it's concerning, obviously, otherwise we wouldn't be here. The over-service is on March 14th, March 17th, the 22nd, and the 28th. Even January 12th, we have some marijuana that's found on a dancer. I'm not saying these guys are chucking them when they're coming in. But goodness, they got to, I mean, there's something that, we can't be going to a bar with weed and then working there. So I guess that's how I see this, is there's certain inputs and outputs in a scenario, and regardless of what those inputs are, the owners are responsible for the output of what happens. Whether they change that, whether the committee allows them an opportunity to change that, I guess I'm not making a recommendation one way or the other. You've heard the allegations, you've heard the officers, you've seen the video. Ultimately, I think you're all supremely confident to make the decision in terms of however you think the best remedy for the community would be here. But it's quite obvious, and I think it's obvious as they've identified, something's got to, something's got to change, something's got to give. There's no doubt about it, before we get more incidents like this. So I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. So now, at this time, I move to go to closed sessions. So I believe Rebecca, she will read out the closed sessions at this time.
Having heard all the evidence in this case, the committee will go into closed session pursuant to Section 19.85 Sub 1 Sub A of the statutes to deliberate. Upon completion of deliberation, the committee will reconvene in open session, and at that time, announce its findings and determinations.
So now, at this time...
We're out. Get out of here.
Do you need a second? I'll second it.
Need a motion?
Yes, sorry.
I make a motion to go into closed session.
Second.
I favor the motion to go into closed sessions.
All right.
Hi.
I oppose the idea.